Seven o'clock, I'd like to call the January ninth, 2023, the regular Beacon City School District's school board meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
(inaudible)
Ms. Flynn?
Here.
Mr. Galloway?
Here.
Excuse?
Here.
Mr. Stein?
Excused.
Mr. White?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Ms. Huer?
Here, thank you. Matt, can you review the fire exits, please?
Yes, emergency exits are in the back of the LGI.
Can I have a motion to waive policy two three five zero meeting procedures?
So moved.
Second.
Just so everyone knows, we're doing this because we're doing the agenda slightly out of order tonight.
I can't hear.
Just so everyone is aware, we're doing that because the agenda is... just so everyone is aware, we're doing that so that... because our agenda is slightly out of our order of our normal policy tonight. Can everyone hear me okay now?
Yeah.
Okay, great. You're welcome to move forward if you can't hear me. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm also in favor, passes eight to zero. Next, we have open to the public. Anne Marie, do you mind handing me the sheet? Thank you. So we have some new faces in the audience. I just want to remind everyone that public comment is four minutes. And first on the list is Erin Junta.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Landau, students. Thank you very much for your service. I'd like to make a comment about the proposal to change the name of Columbus Day on the BCSD calendar to Indigenous Peoples' Day. During the four separate trips that started with the one in 1492, Columbus landed on various Caribbean islands that are now the Bahamas, but he never actually reached North America at that time, which of course was already inhabited by Native Americans. On those islands in which he landed, he enslaved and brutalized the native population he encountered, including forced conversion to Christianity, stealing people's land, and spreading disease among the population. Columbus was a colonizer. His arrival led to the forceful taking of land and set the stage for widespread death and loss of indigenous ways of life. Renaming Columbus Day as Indigenous Peoples' Day offers an opportunity for educators to rethink how they teach what some have characterized as a sanitized story of the arrival of Columbus. This version omits or downplays the devastating impact of Columbus's arrival on indigenous peoples. Indigenous Peoples' Day is an opportunity to reconcile tensions between these two perspectives. Quoting from Susan Faircloth, a professor and director of the School of Education at Colorado State University and an enrolled member of the Caheri Tribe of North Carolina, says, "Research has shown that many schools do not accurately represent indigenous peoples when they teach history. This is true not only on Indigenous Peoples' Day, but throughout the school year. Researchers have found that K through 12 schools tend to teach about Native Americans as if they existed only in the past. By revising the curriculum to better reflect both past and current histories and stories of Native American people, educators can more accurately teach students about their cultures, histories, and traditions. My family and I support the BCSD in celebrating the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day instead of Columbus Day, in recognition of the Native American population all too often minimized or excluded from the Columbus narrative. And I support the name change, not as a slap in the face to the contributions that Italians or Italian-Americans have made to this nation hundreds of years after Columbus sailed, but instead to pay respect to and celebrate and honor the history and contributions of Native Americans to this nation. Thank you very much."
Thank you. Next is Eileen Shepherd.
Hi. "Let us, in the name of the Holy Trinity, go on sending all the slaves that can be sold." Who said this? Here's a hint: He was kicked out of Italy for being a scoundrel and hustling for the Spanish crown. Yes, that guy from 1492 that sailed the Ocean Blue, the words of none other than Christopher Columbus. Upon landing in the Bahamas on his first day, he captured six Ta'ee No' people. He thought they would make great servants. That was just the beginning. He went on to be directly responsible for the deaths, enslavement, and human trafficking of millions, including children. What is in a name? Changing the name of this holiday may not seem important to some, however, what Christopher Columbus represents to the indigenous and native people of this land is a celebration of genocide and dispossession, despite what has been taught in the past. This does not seem to fall in line with our school district's mission of diversity, equity in education for all students, and a culture of care. New Paltz District has recently changed the name of this holiday, and Arlington, Newburgh, and Hallidayan have it included on their district calendars, which is a nice platitude, but who would want to share their holiday with the very person who's responsible for the erasure of their culture, murder, enslavement, and the human trafficking of men, women, and children? My family is in support of the complete name change from Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day, and I applaud you for confronting the past, bringing darkness to light, and putting this up for a vote. Thank you."
Thank you. Amy Farid, is that right?
Hawa'i. Good evening. My name is Amy Farid, and I am a member of the Osage Nation of Oklahoma. My Osage name is Hu Edam. That translates to English as she who carries, follows the eagle. The eagle who carries our prayers and traditions. I now have my own first daughter, who goes to school at Ramout, and I am responsible for teaching her our Wajaji ways. I'm also responsible for educating her in the ways of the other world that we live in. This world. The world that would rather celebrate Christopher Columbus than celebrate a people, my people, who have suffered and continue to suffer injustice and hatred for merely existing. I'm sure many of you know the atrocities that Christopher Columbus and his cohorts committed colonizing this country. If you're not aware, it's nothing short of murder, torture, and slavery. And like both of my ladies preceding me said, that he is responsible for starting the transatlantic slave trade. He was also a well-known sex trafficker of young indigenous girls. But educating you on Christopher Columbus is not my responsibility. The history is there for you to discover. We now know the real story, and it is up to us to teach our children the true and painful history of colonization. We can do that without celebrating this man. We do not celebrate Adolf Hitler Day. We shouldn't be celebrating Christopher Columbus Day. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Dennis Pavlock?
Dennis Pavlock, Beacon resident. Excuse me. I like this comment I'm going to talk about, my suggestion to be included in the hopefully the sustainability of your looking into the 2035 with the electric buses, and that comment can be added into that program if possible. So with that, I'd like to just suggest, my suggestion on that is, the four-day work... the four-day school week is enormously popular among parents and students, the new research finds. It typically saves district a small but not intangible amounts of cash on their day out of school. Students are typically working, doing errands, spending time with family, not running wild. More than 1,600 US school districts have adopted the model as of 2019, 2020. In some states, it represents a significant widespread restructuring of district operations. When timing was added up, districts in the sample using the four-day schedule had longer days by about 50 minutes, but over the course of the average, 58 fewer hours of school. Students in a four-day work week spent significantly more time on school sports, on chores than did the five-day school week. Four-day secondary students also spent more time on homework, jobs, school activities, hobbies, and their counterparts. Most students in a four-day districts, 80% of their high school students and 90% of the elementary students, spent their day off at home. The work... the four-day week did not appear to be affect students' absenteeism rates or result in food insecurities for students. It did seem to change some sleep patterns. With the four-day elementary students reporting, they got more sleep, and a four-day secondary students say they felt much less tired than their counterparts in a five-day system. Parents and students have given the choice overwhelmingly said they favored a four-day model plan, with 69% of the former and 85% of the latter preferring it to a five-day One-eyed braising finding could be the increased amount of chores four-day students appeared to engage in, but the category also included things like errands and medical appointments. The researchers found that there was no significant difference between the four-day, five-day districts when looking at absolute measures of student proficiency. So if you can make that suggestion happen. And you know, I'd like to just mention something else about this Columbus Day if I could. When my comments... I had my comments here a couple of weeks ago. I don't understand, you know, why it has to be one way or the other, like my comments said about a month ago when I was here. Why can't... so why can't you have both things on the calendar? I have nothing against indigenous people. They're great people. So why can't you have Columbus Day on the bottom or whatever, have the both names on the calendar? I don't understand that part. So why does it gotta be one way or the other? I don't get it. So my other comment is, who was supposed to turn on the boilers when classrooms flooded? And what's going to happen to that person, if anything? Some classrooms flooded, some... Supposed to be in at 6:30 in the morning, turn the boilers on, no boilers were turned on until quarter to one? By then, everything, pipes were busted, schools, rooms were flooded? So who's going to pay for that? There's your audience, folks, right there. That's who's going to pay for it. Shouldn't be, but that's who's going to pay for it eventually. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dennis. Joe Bafudo?
Good evening, President. You are members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Landau, district staff, and fellow members of the Beacon community. My name is Joe Bafudo. I've been in the Beacon community for well more than 40 years. I'm a BHS graduate, as well as both a past and current parent. I'm also an appointed volunteer member of the Audit and Finance Committee of the School District Board. However, I am here again tonight as the current president of Order Sons and Daughters of Italy and America, St. Francis of the Sisi Lodge 2629, established here in Beacon since 1989. And I'm here declaring that I am not in support of the proposed consideration announced by Dr. Landau to change the name of the Columbus Day holiday to Indigenous Peoples' Day. I'm extremely proud of my Italian descent and the origin of my surname, both which inspired me to become an engaged member of OSDIA several years ago. Our local lodge was founded here in 1989, and we have strong ties to the area and BCSD. We have members of our lodge spanning three generations of Beacon families, including a number of BCSD retirees, and we have actively participated in numerous local events over our existence, including Spirit of Beacon Day. Each year, we offer scholarships to at least one graduating BHS senior of Italian-American descent, and we encourage all district fifth graders to participate in an essay contest highlighting an influential Italian-American of their choice. And a matter of fact, just last month, we celebrated and honored four young fifth graders and their families from the district, dinner and the opportunity to share and read their outstanding winning essays to our lodge membership. Now, we are grateful that BCSD has offered the opportunity to BHS students to study Italian as a foreign language. However, we are insistent that the district maintains the calendar with the Columbus Day holiday. Should St. Patrick's Day be removed because of the long and bloody struggle between Catholics and Protestants in Northern Ireland? Do we abolish a Thanksgiving holiday because the pilgrims invaded Indian territory? Indigenous peoples have a national holiday, National Day, August 9th, along with a Friday after Thanksgiving, as well as the month of November to celebrate and honor culture, heritage, and history. Columbus Day commemorates the arrival to our shores of more than 5 million Italians since 1880. Today, Italian-Americans constitute the nation's fifth-largest ethnic group in our country. Christopher Columbus represents not only the accomplishments and contributions of Italian-Americans, but also the lasting spirit of risk, sacrifice, and self-reliance of a great Italian icon that helps to define the United States of America. I urge the BCSD board to not take the proposed action of renaming nor removing Columbus Day from the school calendar. I advocate for maintaining the second Monday in October as Columbus Day in the Beacon City School District. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin Ashoka?
Good evening. My name is Erin Ashoka. I'm a resident of the Beacon City School District. Firstly, I'd like to thank the board for considering this important topic of how to mark the second Monday in October and for providing adequate time for the public to weigh in on this topic. After consideration, I hope that the board will rename what is currently called Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. Due to the framing around this holiday, many Americans believe that Columbus discovered America and have romanticized stories about the role that Columbus has played in our society. However, we know based on history and facts that this is a myth, that indigenous people were always here, and in the lands that Columbus did conquer, there are many documented instances of he and his crew murdering and enslaving locals. And it's important that we, as a community, recognize this history and take the first steps towards making amends by ceasing to honor this individual. This will also require us to support our teachers and educators in our community, to understand the true history, and re-educate ourselves about the role of Columbus and indigenous folks in our society. So I encourage you to follow the lead of many other school districts, municipalities, and states across the country in renaming the second Monday of October Indigenous Peoples' Day. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Vika Ashoka?
Hi, everyone, superintendent, board, and everyone in the audience. My name is Vika Ashoka. I'm a resident of Beacon, and I'm here to speak on the proposal to change Columbus Day to something else. I really appreciate that this conversation was opened up because it allows us to talk about our values as a community. Holidays are meant to create space for us as a community to share what our values are, and especially in the context of schools, what we want the next generation, the up-and-coming people in our society, what we want them to value. And as a Beacon resident, I want our community to value the people who stewarded this land that we have been, that we are on for thousands of years. The Muncie and Lenape had villages on this land that we are currently standing on. There is a village on the creek, just a mile down the road, and whose philosophies and wisdom that we need to relearn in order to address the challenges of our present and future, such as the climate disasters that we see, the droughts that we see has already affected Mount Beacon and our community, the floods that have and will continue to impact our communities. So let's celebrate those values and those wisdoms and those things that we can learn. Let's also celebrate the workers and immigrant communities who make up the vibrant fabric of our communities. And we can do that without celebrating and honoring specific conquerors and pillagers of various communities, right? So let's make sure we do that. Let's start by celebrating the people who lived here for generations and the little people, and let's take that as a first step to have more nuanced curriculum, curricula about the diverse histories in the United States. We can... I don't know if we offer any ethnic studies programs, but those are fantastic programs. Are there other things that we can do beyond changing names of days? That would be fantastic, I think, for me to see. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Teresa Kraft?
Good evening. I came to the last meeting, and within five minutes, the public comment segment was closed. Not sure how that works. Can I speak about more than one thing on the agenda?
Yeah, you have four minutes.
Okay, I'll talk fast. But just keeping on the same topic, we must save our history, our American history, as well as our local Hudson Valley history. Children must learn the truths. Let's not continue on this path of whitewashing our history. We can relearn, but we should not rewrite it to fit an agenda. We can only embrace the good, the bad, and the ugly. I will forever honor Columbus Day, but I also support the holiday that supports and honors the Native American Indigenous Peoples' Day. Two holidays are better than one, but not an all-out war. Let's embrace our past as we build a stronger future. If everybody wants to give up their land and go back, that's fine, move, right? But I also want to say that I'm here to speak out on the Maribou Project. I want to voice my support. I fully support their request for a 15-year property tax abatement, given that there will be no schoolchildren connected to this project, unlike the original high-density housing project last proposed at this site, and unlike so many of today's build-outs of large-scale overdevelopment within the city of Beacon and surrounding municipalities that will ultimately send students to the city of Beacon School District. Most of these projects have been given the same relief of payment in lieu of taxes. Why are you fighting to close the gates now? I do not believe this project should suffer the consequences caused by others. Why now, when this project could ultimately benefit the children of the Beacon School District? The ultimate benefit of this payment in lieu of taxes might lead to future jobs for today's students, professional trade skills training, employment for their family members. This project will grant public access to the historic mansion and the ability to walk along the Fish Gill Creek perimeter of the grounds to explore Beacon's ecosystem with potential field trips or performance venues at the historic grounds. I think it's a win-win for the city of Beacon and for the many generations of students that will pass through our school district. Please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Eugene Nardone?
I yield my time to Joe, everything I said I agree with.
Okay, thank you. Anne Marie Bettina?
I agree with everything that Joe Bafudo said. Being from the Beacon School District, I've been my whole life, over 40, I have relatives, first cousins, parents, my children, everyone graduated from Beacon High School, and we're very proud of our Italian culture, and we would just like to, forward to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment?
I know.
Come on. Please state your name. I think I know who that is, but...
Hi, my name is Maggie Dickinson. I am a resident of Beacon. I have two children in the district, and I'm just speaking in support of changing the name to Indigenous Peoples' Day. I feel like it's important to be honest about our history, and I feel like keeping the name as Columbus Day celebrates is not honest with our students about the real history of who Columbus was and what he did. And so I just want to speak in favor of that. I think it's important for us to really... you know, I encourage this with my children. I want them to be honest. I want them to understand what really happened and how we got to where we are today, and so I just wanted to speak in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment? Okay. I want to thank those who made a comment. Teresa, I just wanted to say that the reason there was no public comment anymore is because there was no one giving public comment, and so we moved on to the agenda. Next on our agenda is to discuss the proposed Columbus Day name change. So I have some thoughts on this, and I'm willing to share them first, or I can hear from other board members. It's up to you. Is there anyone that wanted to start? We have received, I think, about 70 emails, and I'm very appreciative of the community that took the time to share their thoughts at the board. One of the biggest takeaways for me from those emails is that we are not all working with the same information. And I think that it's really important that we try to do that. This is a very polarizing subject, but I don't think that we should shy away from talking about polarizing subjects. I think we need to actually embrace them and figure out how to talk about them. That is our job in this leadership position. That is our job as a community that wants to remain whole. So in that sense, I'm not necessarily comfortable with just the board having this conversation. I actually would like to form a committee where we invite some public stakeholders, students if they want to participate, and we, you know, we would have to figure out exactly how many meetings and how it would go, but I feel like this isn't a great format for that conversation. So I wanted to see how the board feels about that.
I mean, it's a broad concept, right? You want to have a committee. Do you know how many people you want on the committee? Do you know what the committee's going to be made up of?
No, I mean, that's... I was actually thinking that maybe the PRL committee could come up with the format. I mean, we did that for the audit committee, and it worked very well. I think that the benefit to that is to having a committee. There's definitely... I have very specific and personal thoughts and opinions about what I think should be the name, but I also think that what I've noticed over time, and especially in our country right now, is we talk at each other and we don't listen to each other. And we're not particularly... Thank you, Dennis. We're not particularly curious about why someone else might feel strongly about something. We want to be right, and we want to win. And that is actually, I think, something I would really love to see us change and learn to work together. So like Mr. Bafudo is a very valued member of our audit committee, something that's really important to like the functioning of a district. You know, when you're thinking about a district where there's a lot of inequality, making sure every dollar counts is incredibly important. And so having a volunteer who's very knowledgeable is very important. I'm not saying that I wouldn't change a name because I'm afraid of upsetting him. What I'm saying is that I'd rather have us all understand each other and listen. And part of the thing that I did when this first came up was, and I'll be very honest about how I became curious about this, I'm descended from Irish immigrants. And I know where my father lived in Boston, his, my, I think it's my great-grandmother, she didn't talk to her daughter again because she married an Italian. And so I was like, how'd the Italians get a day? And the Irish put up with that because St. Patrick's Day is not a national holiday. You don't get off from school. Parochial schools got off from school. So then I decided, I became very curious about it. So I was like, how did this happen? And it was lobbied for in 1934 by the Knights of Columbus, which were a Catholic organization. And part of the reason why they took the name Columbus is because they were discriminated against for not being from America, and the belief that they would not be in allegiance with America, that they would answer to the Pope. And so in this country that was largely Protestant, and the power structures like trace their names, trace their identities back to who came on the Mayflower and who signed the Constitution or the Declaration of Independence, they discriminated against Italians, I mean Catholics. So this was a way of immigrants to say, we were here before you. So we're talking about a myth upon a myth upon a myth, but really what it's about is who gets to belong here and why, and whether they feel like they were discriminated against and why. And I do really encourage people to read, if you can get through it, bury my heart at wounded knee, because you will understand that... I mean, if you can get through it, because it's so upsetting and so depressing and so shameful what happened to Native Americans. And there's, of course, there's cases in front of the Supreme Court today about what's still happening to them related to sovereignty and adoption, and it's very, very worth knowing about. But what would be great is, let's work from a common set of facts, and let's be a community and talk to each other and listen to each other and respect that we all might have a stake in where this goes forward. And it's like, there's so many nice people here, and I bet if we all talked to each other, it would be so much more productive than if we just decided what was right or wrong. So do we know how many people? No. Probably how many people would be willing to volunteer and sit down together? And... but... And part of the reason why they took the name Columbus is because they were discriminated against for not being from America and the belief that they would not be in allegiance with America, that they would answer to the Pope. And so in this country that was largely Protestant, and the power structures like trace their names, trace their identities back to who came on the Mayflower and who signed the Constitution or the Declaration of Independence, they discriminated against Italians, I mean Catholics. So this was a way of immigrants to say, we were here before you. So we're talking about a myth upon a myth upon a myth, but really what it's about is who gets to belong here and why, and whether they feel like they were discriminated against and why. And I do really encourage people to read, if you can get through it, "Bury My Heart at Wounded Knee," because you will understand that, I mean, if you can get through it, because it's so upsetting and so depressing and so shameful what happened to Native Americans. And there's, of course, there's cases in front of the Supreme Court today about what's still happening to them related to sovereignty and adoption, and it's very, very worth knowing about. But what would be great is let's work from a common set of facts, and let's be a community and talk to each other and listen to each other and respect that we all might have a stake in where this goes forward. And it's like, there's so many nice people here, and I bet if we all talked to each other, it would be so much more productive than if we just decided what was right or wrong. So do we know how many people? No. Probably how many people would be willing to volunteer and sit down together? But we could decide is what materials we want to use and why. And so, and also, the Knights of Columbus were founded by an Irish priest, and they were founded as a mutual aid association for discriminated workers who had no rights, and if someone died, mostly immigrants, Polish, Irish, Italian, that their families would be destitute. And so they needed to have somebody look out for them, and that's what that organization did.
No, thank you for just... So I'm going to say that's a yes for the committee?
Yes. Please.
But that's exactly what I'm talking about, is I think that if we, you know, we form this committee and everyone agrees to read, I mean, there were so many links sent to us, and I read them all, and I think that if we have people, you know, reading what other people are reading and just sort of kind of bringing it together into a conversation, into a respectful conversation, I think it could be very powerful. I think it would be much more meaningful in the end, whatever solution we come to around it, than if we sit here. It might also be a more diverse group of people. I mean, I think that, you know, most of the board thinks a certain way. I really respect the diversity of Beacon. I want there to be, I want it to be a conversation of diverse opinions.
I agree. I think a committee would be useful.
Yes. Craig?
When this first came up, I thought, well, first things first, we have not heard from legal counsel about any legal questions that might pertain to this. I think it would be prudent to ask our legal counsel to give us a draft of whatever thoughts they've collected. I bet they've dealt with this issue before someplace in the state of New York. We're not the first to consider it, but as a matter of proper procedure, I would like to request that we ask our counsel to weigh in on what our options are or may not be, or what ramifications there might be, or maybe there's none. But it is a federal holiday, and that is why we close school on that day. So I'd say, let's be cautious.
Sure. I mean, and to be clear, this would be changing the name on the district calendar. There would be no, and I did speak to legal counsel, I think, early on about it, and there's nothing to it. But I mean, I would obviously can confirm that. It would be, in the end, it would be voted by resolution, I think so. They would write the resolution. Alina, did you have any?
No, I agree to the committee.
Okay.
I'm fine with the committee, as long as there's opinions from both sides, you know, from all perspectives.
Definitely.
That's the point.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Do we want to set a timeline for when we have decisions on sort of...
The form of it?
The format, what our deadlines are and things like that?
Yeah, I mean, hopefully we can talk about it at the next meeting.
In February, or in January 23rd.
Yeah, and bring it to the next meeting to discuss the form of it. Did you, Ari and Harsh, did you have any comments or anything that you wanted to make? I just wanted to give you the opportunity, but no pressure. Oh, sorry, I didn't see you there.
No, it's okay. I just wanted to point out that I think that the committee is a really great idea. I think it would provide the space for us to not have the four-minute restriction to speak about our personal beliefs, and it would also, we would get a lot of opinions from a more diverse group of people, and I think it'd be really important to collect a larger group of people to speak on this topic, just so that we can really hear everybody's perspective. And I think, like you said, it's really important to sort of listen to everybody else instead of just arguing over this one specific topic. So I just want to agree with you.
Thank you. Okay, so that's what we'll do. We have a PRL meeting on the January 23rd. We'll work out the basic foundation of the plan and bring it to the board at the next meeting. Which is the 23rd? Sorry? Next board meeting is the 23rd?
Yes, yes. 6:00 PM before the board meeting.
Okay, thank you for that. Moving on, we're going to have the budget calendar update from Dr. Landau.
Just, Anne Marie, I'm going to look at you, because you may have better details. A question came up in public comment about, over winter break, so both the high school and Rambout experienced brownout essentially, so it wasn't a matter of people not checking the boiler or monitoring temperature. With the greatly reduced power, we weren't able to heat the buildings like we should. So there was quite an involved cleanup over winter break. People came in on Christmas Day. But we have insurances covering this. Yeah, but we are, we're anticipating insurance to cover it. So, all right. All right, this is pretty quick. I just wanted to lay out our draft budget calendar and then just talk about some of the things that we are, we're working with staff and will be working with you all on things that are shaping our budget process this year. So this is just an overview of the calendar. When it says school presentation, that may not be specifically linked to the budget, but that's when principals be coming in to present about, you know, things that are happening in their school this year. So it's fairly typical. However, one of the things we're trying to do is really have a few things guide our process this year with our department heads, with our principals, and also just receiving input from you and other stakeholders. So some of the things that are both sort of goals and drivers for our budget process this year, one is equity and access. This really came through very strongly in the strategic planning process. So I'm just going to take a minute, and we'll get much deeper in this over the next few months. One of the things that came out of strategic planning was for us to really start developing a cohesive and supportive plan for field trips, or what we called on the strategic planning signature experiences at each grade level. And then finding ways to, if we can't fully fund the signature experience or the trip, that we try to offset the cost so it's accessible to all of our students. An example of something that, where we do do this, is fifth grade, the fifth grade trip to Sharp Reservation. That's something that is supported by the district financially. A signature experience like Calico Ball in third grade, for the last several years, has been supported by the district budget process. But we want to look at others. We want to create some where we're either trying to offset the cost or fund it ourselves, depending on what we feel is feasible. So that's going to be something that we're going to be working with principals on and teachers, and also gaining input from other stakeholders. This will be probably a multi-year effort, but we really want to look at ways to be more equitable with what we're offering our students and provide more access to these signature experiences, and be also more cohesive with what we offer between the schools at the elementary level. One of our big pieces of feedback with extracurriculars was to, A, offer more, which we have been doing. We've talked a little bit about it. We're going to bring data, excuse me, a few meetings from now in terms of, we're offering way more clubs and after-school activities than we have a few years ago. We have way more students involved in these things. But one of the things that came through in the strategic planning process was being able to offer more transportation and make those clubs and extracurriculars more accessible for our students. College coursework. This is just a quick opportunity to give you an update on where we are with the DCC process and also just sort of talk bigger picture. Students in 10th and 11th grade will be getting a letter in a couple of days basically saying, you know, the DCC administration and board are sticking with their plan of charging one-third tuition, so we do have to notify families that that is indeed moving forward. There is some work. I'm on a subcommittee with folks from DCC and other superintendents to try to find ways to either offset costs or pay for students who come from economically challenged families or backgrounds to help them pay for tuition. There's also some advocacy happening with the Justice Legislature to maybe have the legislature try to fund the courses for low-income students. That all said, we're trying to use this upcoming year as a way for us to find ways to keep it accessible for all of our students, but also to explore other options. So we want to spend the next year looking at, are there other post-secondary institutions we should be working with, maybe instead of or along with DCC, to offer more college experiences for our high school students? So we're very committed to both of those processes. And then with transportation, and you know, if we go back to the calendar, so transportation, we're going to be discussing on March 13th. One of the, a couple of things we'll be discussing with transportation is we are working on a proposal essentially to the community to lower the restriction that city school districts have in place of one and a half miles. There's essentially one and a half mile restriction. Students who live one and a half mile, you know, more than one and a half miles from their school receive, you know, transportation from us, and we would like to lower that. We're working on exactly where we want to lower it. Right now, we're studying one mile, but we may need to go a little bit further. What we're, the reason we're studying this is, is we're finding a pretty large number of students are impacted by not receiving transportation, especially to Rambout and Beacon High School. So what we've learned is it needs to be actually on the ballot, and the community needs to vote on this change, since it's changing what's seen as a requirement for city school districts, so the community needs to weigh in. Obviously, we want to talk with you about it in terms of both the reasoning behind it, so we'll provide more data in March, and also if it has a budgetary impact. And ultimately, the board, you will weigh in on whether we want to put that on the ballot. It is an equity and access initiative, because we feel like it will, we feel like it will increase the number of students who come to both Rambout and Beacon High School on time and not make kids reliant on getting a ride or walking in inclement weather to get to school. Another thing about transportation, we're working on for March 13th, and we'll provide maybe some smaller updates on this front with transportation is the electric vehicle initiative. So we've done the groundwork with Central Hudson and submitted the information that they've required, and now we have some meetings with them. And so we want to lay out in upcoming board meetings just what, either some early tentative thinking about what, about steps we should be taking with electric buses. So there are a lot of variables. We have our Director of Transportation working on it, our Facilities Department working on it, Anne Marie and I are also working on it pretty closely, and we're also working with our architecture and engineering firm, Tetra Tech, on that, too. So those are some things you're going to be hearing more about, but we are actively working on all these things right now in terms of equity and access. Another thing that we are working on is really looking at ways to strengthen both how we're supporting students academically in school and further strengthening what we're doing with mental health supports for our students. So we're looking at a few things with that effort. We want to evaluate the current efforts that we're doing, especially these teacher on special assignment positions we have this year. We have three that we're funding through federal funds that, you know, we just have for the next year. One is the RTI specialist at the elementary level. Another is the restorative practices specialist at the high school, and the third is the social-emotional coordinator at the elementary level. So we're going to be looking at both those positions. And the other thing we're going to be looking at is class size. So we have just made huge gains with class size over the last five years, really, especially at the elementary level. But we may need to really look at that, because we've done so good with class sizes that we probably need to readjust a little bit, because some of our classes are getting really small. And our goal at the time when we started that effort five years ago was to get elementary classes around an average of between 18 to 20, average, you know? There's outliers on both ends of that. We're well below that at this time, so we're looking at possibly reutilizing some positions that will support academic intervention at the elementary and middle school level. And we'll be bringing more updates with that in the meetings to come as well. So at the next board meeting, Anne Marie will provide, on the fiscal side, what we're kind of looking at in terms of things that are going to be shaping the budget process. I know there's already a lot of talk about TRS and ERS contributions and those probably going up for districts this year. We won't note, you know, the specifics of that, but we'll be able to provide some of the fiscal things that we're dealing with as we prepare the budget as well. But this is the draft calendar. These are some of the things we're thinking about. We're very, very motivated this year to increase equity and access pre-K to 12, and also really try to find ways to do stronger interventions on the academic side and also for mental health pre-K to 12 as well. Any quick, or any questions? Yeah?
Yeah, teachers retirement system, employees retirement system, TRS, ERS. What do we know so far? What's the early read on that?
The early read is I'm getting from my professional organizations that to anticipate increased contributions. I don't know if that's what you're hearing from yours?
Yes. If it does go more than 2%, then we do get some kind of adjustment on our tax cap. So we will have to see. And for years of the tax cap, I think there's only been one or two years that that's happened. We've had increases, but they have to, you know, go over 2%. So we're watching that to see how that impacts us.
On the electric buses, we've talked before about the consideration of possibly buying one as a training exercise and getting our feet wet and learning what it's all about. How does that look? And do you have an idea of what it would cost to buy one? Obviously, it depends on the size, but we're talking about, I think, the bigger ones, right? Mediums?
We're not quite there in terms of being able to specifically answer that question. What we're trying to work on right now is just, the first step is doing this work with Central Hudson to make sure we have the, I sometimes don't always get the wording right with technical things, but the electrical infrastructure, to make sure we have that in place for a bus that's purchased. And the other thing we're trying to look at is, you know, that we receive funding support to pay for this, whether it's to the state or the federal government. So we're trying to look at both of those things at once. The one thing we are learning, you know, a few months ago, I think we said in a board meeting that if you put in for one of these vehicles that the companies, it's like a year and a half out that you'll get it. We're now hearing that that is sped up quite a bit. So the purchasing process, you're more likely to get the bus if you purchase it more quickly now. You're not waiting a year and a half anymore. There's also, like you mentioned, there's the training part with both our mechanics. We, you know, we've been learning a lot. We also have to rework with our local first responders, because they respond to a bus emergency with an electrical bus differently than they do a diesel one. There's training the drivers, too. So, you know, there's, this is a, you know, this project has a lot of strands to it. We do feel good about getting some of those first parts done, and we'll probably be providing some updates to the board prior to March 13th. We don't, we don't want to just sort of wait till March 13th and say, you know, here's where we are. You know, one of the things I think that would be really helpful in this effort is to identify some potential outside funding that would help, too.
Well, the governor's State of the State speech is, I think, tomorrow. So we may start getting some early clues.
Right, right. And that, the, I forget what it was called, on the ballot, the statewide, what was it, like a referendum?
Bond issue.
The bond. We're kind of waiting for more details about that, too. Any other questions? All right.
Thank you. Harsh, Ari, Demi, do you have any comments that you wanted to share tonight?
So I just kind of wanted to provide a little bit of an update with the high school. So I know you guys were working on budgeting for more field trips, and recently, we've had an opportunity. So I'm president of the National Honor Society at the high school, and recently, we've had an opportunity... an opportunity to attend a leadership conference in Crystal City, Virginia. And at the conference, it's a, it's a three-day event where students are going to be able to network with student leaders from other schools all around the country. And so it's a great opportunity for us to, like, learn from our other peers and to hear from experts and just expand our leadership skills in general. And it's going to help us be able to make a greater impact in, within the school and the community as well. And I just want to say that providing more field trips for high schoolers, I feel like, is a great idea. All of my core memories come from field trips in elementary school and middle school, so.
Right.
I think it also takes away from the stresses of high schoolers as well, so, yeah.
Well, I know one of the 11th grade, is it all of 11th grade that the plan is for them to do the field trip to Ellis Island in Lower Manhattan this year? So it's, it's hard sometimes at the high school level to do like these, the entire grade goes on a trip, but we are trying to look at things at both Rumbout and the high school in terms of more trips and funding more, and trying to develop like a multi-year plan to do this. So it's, it's exciting. I'm glad there's interest. And you're right, those are the things I remember from school, too.
I know a lot of students are also willing to fundraise on their own. Like in middle school, I think we did like Gertrude Hawk fundraisers to fundraise for certain, I think it was a DCC trip actually, or the Washington DC trip. So, yeah, I think a lot of students are also interested in that, so it doesn't have to necessarily come from the board. I think just students knowing that you guys are open to the idea is very helpful.
Right. And just for you all to, to the DCC thing, one of the things that we really, this letter will be going out in a couple of days explaining that, you know, DCC is not changing their policy. There is some hope that there'll be some funding from some source to help offset the costs for students and families, but the one thing we, we don't want to happen, and if you can help spread the word with this, I, I know it will help high school guidance and teachers and administration, is we don't want students not signing up for fear of not paying, like, we want to figure out who they are and just find ways to help. And so I know there's kind of an all-hands-on-deck effort with that, and, because the last thing we want, I've said this in several meetings, is we don't want to, we don't want a student kind of seeing this letter and just saying, well, there's no way. I'm kind of required to send it, because I have to give notice, you know, to families, but I know there's going to be messaging at the high school level about, you know, really reaching out to a lot of individual students to make sure they're not missing something, you know? There's, there's ways, whether if it's the legislature that helps us out, or if it's individual donors or something, you know, a way to help students who have financial need to get them through these courses. So if you can help with that messaging, too, or talk to Mr. Dwyer more about it, you know, and I think it's going to require a lot of people to get that word out.
Is there any opportunity for us to speak to the county legislature about funding for us?
So I don't completely understand their process, but what I'm learning is that they, I don't know, I didn't even know when their meeting is, in February, but at a meeting in February, I think there is some discussion that's going to potentially happen about possibly funding, you know, partial, or at least partially funding students. So Meredith, I know you've spoken with some county legislators.
Yeah.
Like, I know, I know the Duchess superintendents are writing a joint letter to the legislature, essentially asking them to fund the courses for students who qualify for free and reduced lunch, you know? But I, I'm not sure, I don't want to, you know, I'm not trying to, these are just things I'm hearing. You know, I'm not sure exactly how their process works.
Yeah, I don't, at this point, I don't have more exact information, but I, I did reach out to find out, so if you, if we find that we can actually make public comment and you guys want to go, we, I'd be happy to drive it.
Right, because I, I want to acknowledge Ari and Harsh both went to the DCC board meeting last, in December. And from what I understand, you did not have ready access to public comment, but you were eventually able to share your thoughts with some of the board members and some of the administration, and I'm very appreciative of you doing that. It's time, you're both very busy and it's time out of your schedule, but I appreciate you doing that. It means a lot. And I think it's really important for them to hear from students. So we'll find out more about the Duchess County part. I do think there's, from what I'm hearing, there's some interest on the part of the legislature to address this in some way, although I'm not saying that, you know, like officially, but there's a lot of, I think, behind-the-scenes work kind of happening. So, you know, one of the things from the budget perspective, you know, we may be coming to you in this budget perspective to talk about, do we as a district also offset the cost of college tuition? You know, whether it's DCC or somewhere else that we're doing the course. And so that's probably going to be a conversation in the next few months at the board level about what we want to do. And we're also trying to get legal counsel on all of this as well, but sorry for the ramble there, but thank you for your advocacy.
Demi, did you have anything?
Free with Ari on most of it, and thank you for advocating for us for the DCC courses as well and Mr. Dwyer, so doing our best. Yeah, I know a lot of people are willing to speak on it, more students, but it kind of feels as though they're not really giving us a voice, just because they're not putting us on their agenda. I had actually sent out a petition to the high schoolers about this issue on change.org, and we had over 200 people sign it, and we wanted to be able to expand it and get it to other schools. I would just need more information on, like, contacts and stuff, but I could definitely, like, arrange a group of students to speak for a public comment if there is an opportunity available.
Okay, great. Yeah, I wanted to mention, I was going to mention my board comments, but I'll mention while you guys are still here, that I was really proud of you. You were so eloquent, and it was very awkward, you know, we tried to go, we went to the DCC board meeting. Apparently, deep in their bylaws, it says that you can only make public comment if you sign up at least two hours beforehand and only on, you can only speak on items that are on the agenda. But they were kind enough to give us an audience after their meeting, and several board members sat down with us, and the president of DCC, and the chair of the board, and Ari and Harsh spoke really eloquently about the impact of this decision, and I was really proud of Beacon for, for showing up in that way, so, thank you. Sorry to take you on a wild goose chase. I'll, I'll read the bylaws next time. Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual? And the board will return in about 15 minutes, 20 minutes.
So move.
Flora, second by Alina. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm also in favor, passes eight to zero. Thanks.
Thank you for your patience.
I was taking my kid to somebody's game. You know, his own game is messing with me seeing someone.
There are, reading the agenda, there are no changes to it tonight. Matt, did you have an additional report beyond your?
Just super quick, I'm beginning the community conversation tour this week. I'll send out a reminder to the community tomorrow about it, but it will be here at the high school Wednesday at 7:00. And basically, every week after that, I'm going to one of the schools. Usually, it's a Wednesday, not always, at 7:00. A nice way to kick off the night, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Board comments? Kristin?
No comments tonight. It was, well, very nice to go to the commendation ceremony. It's always wonderful to see all the different things that kids and teachers are doing in the district, so thanks so much for those who attended and all the good work that was recognized.
John? Eunice?
No comment.
Alina?
I just really enjoy when the students come and they, and they speak, and to find out that they went and spoke to the Duchess Board, and just their, their excitement on wanting to speak to someone about this. I love to see that in, in our youth, so that's, that's about it.
Yeah, they were really great, really impressive. Anthony?
No comments.
Craig?
Yeah, wanted to follow up on the Duchess Community College issue. Thank you, Matt, for continuing to press forward on such initiatives as may present themselves. It was encouraging to hear that there's some glimmer of hope that the county legislature might be willing to reconsider their position, which was basically, please don't ask us to go fund something. We already adopted our budget and, you know, you're out of luck. But, you know, we have to remember that no person chooses where to be born. Nobody chooses when to be born. Nobody chooses to whom to be born. The kids are always innocent, and they are not the ones that control the economics of their own situation. Even their parents don't control the economics to the desire that they would like to have. So what are we going to do for equity if we leave students who happen to be unable to pay for these courses, whose parents are unable to pay for these courses? And we sit here with, talking about inclusion matters and equity and all that, you know, it, it just doesn't add up unless somebody comes up with the money to make up for the losses that the community college is experiencing in their budget, which is understandable, because they have a decrease in enrollment, a decrease in a part of their revenue stream. But everyone should understand that the county legislature is a principal funder of the community college, and it's a good community college, and I'd like it to stay that way. And part of it is that you, you get these high school students who are advanced and leaders of the future and the people that are going to take care of you as you get old and as they go out into the world that you populate. We want them to be well-trained. So really, the focus, I think, is primarily on urging the legislature to do something, and our legislator, Yvette Valdez-Smith, made a proposal to come up with a few hundred thousand dollars for a legislature that already delivered us, for God's sakes, a double-digit tax decrease. I'm sorry, I didn't ask for a decrease. I'd be happy if you kept it to 2%. I'd say, good job. If you delivered a 0% increase, I'd say, great job. But going all the way into a decrease and, and not being willing to take a small fraction of that back in order to remedy this sudden problem that the college is having, I think would be a grave injustice on the part of the legislature.
Thank you. Flora?
So we had the Duchess County School Boards Association meeting last week, and the DCC tuition issue was a big topic of conversation. And the message there was basically that, you know, the, the decision is the decision, and now the, the work is on advocating to find funding solutions. Some districts are looking at whether they can legally cover the cost, which, you know, is something that Matt had mentioned, and, and also looking at advocating for funding from county and state legislators. It's something that we're going to talk about also at the next Proll meeting on the 23rd. I was a little unclear, I mean, this is something we can talk about later, but, you know, we have NISBA's Lobby Day in Albany coming up on February 15th. I wasn't sure if maybe this is something that would be useful for us to schedule one of those meetings around, which, you know, Kelly at DCBA, DCSBA is, is, is working on scheduling meetings with our reps for us, so I think it's, it might be a good opportunity to discuss the issue one-on-one. Also, today was the School Meal Advocacy Day, organized by Healthy School Meals for All New York Kids Coalition. That was in Albany. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to be there, but just to, to get everyone up to speed, there were advocates there and legislators as well proposing a budget item to support universal preschool meals. They're estimating it would cost the state $200 million to fund the gap that's not already covered by federal funding, and that's statewide, not including New York City. The message that I got was that they just don't think, they, they aren't counting on federal government to do this, that it's, they're really working on getting momentum from the state. So today was sort of designed to urge Governor Hochul to add this money, this funding, to the 2024 state budget, the fiscal year 2024 state budget, and then to try and get the Assembly and Senate to include it in their one, respective one-house budgets. Even though there is a lot of support, there was no indication of how much support it has, and I, I haven't heard back yet if the governor had an official response to that. Maybe, maybe she'll, she'll mention it tomorrow, I'm not sure. But if that did happen, then schools could begin providing free meals for all students as soon as, as the next school year. So fingers crossed that the momentum that they said that they were experiencing today is, is big enough to make that happen. I also have the, the website for the organization, and they have a really good letter campaign where you can, you know, send the letter to your, to your legislators and also sign up for additional info. I will share that information with all of you in case you want to just send the, send the letter out, and hopefully, we'll, we'll hear something back on that soon. That's all.
Great, thank you. I just have a couple of things. One, I already talked about our trip to DCC with Ari and Harsh. The, NISBA did a sort of like a preview of the budget that I listened to, and I think it's available on their website. That was interesting, just talking about TRS, ERS, inflation. These are the things that we're going to be talking a lot about over the next few months. So if you want to take a peek at that, you can. I wanted to make sure everyone got an invitation.
Should we just, like, say that it's teachers' retirement system?
Teachers' retirement system, and what is the E?
Employee.
Employee retirement system.
Which are some of our biggest expenses.
Yeah. And it is, it looks like a big. In fact, David Shaw had some.
Yeah, I have.
And I think Kelly Lappman sent that.
I, I'm going to share that right now.
He had some alarming numbers around that.
Yeah.
I wanted to make sure everyone got the email from Bosie's about the tours for, of the renovations. If you can make it up there, that would be an interesting thing to see. I don't know if that, that I can, but it's exciting that they're tour-ready. And, yeah, that commendation ceremony was really great. Thank you very much. And I, you know, there were several firsts, which I, I want to commend you for, Matt. I think that you sticking around as long as you have has, is paying off. Thanks a lot for that.
You got to fill out that survey.
Yeah. I was filling out a survey today, I don't know if everybody got, from George Mason University, and it says, how many years has your superintendent been there? And I was proudly checking the box.
Can I ask a quick committee question? Are we good for Thursday night for facilities?
Yeah.
Okay. Great.
I'm sorry I didn't bring that up. That's the 12th, right?
Thursday, 7:00. We'll be in here. We're getting everybody in person.
Yes.
So.
Oh, great.
Bill's coming. Pam's coming.
Pam will be here.
Jeff West will be here, the whole.
I don't think we've met some of them in person.
Yeah, not for a while.
No at all.
Years.
Pam, I don't think you've.
Oh, yeah. We've met with Pam in person, you all probably haven't, so it's good, Thursday night, great.
Okay.
7:00, right?
Yep, 7:00, yep. Okay, the next item on the agenda is to discuss the Mirbo Inn and Spa pilot. We have, hello, Dan, sorry, I didn't greet you earlier. So we've got our legal counsel here, Dan Pettigrew. We've got Sarah Lee from the Duchess County Industrial Development Agency, and we've got Ed Calog, Ed Calog, the, one of the owners of the Mirbo Spa and Inn. I had Dan draft a letter that I felt sort of threaded the needle from the conversation at the last meeting, but Sarah is here to, anyone is here to answer questions, if anyone has any specific questions. Sarah also mentioned that there's, there's another pilot coming our way, so I don't know if you want to talk about that very briefly, just so we have that sort of in the context of this. Should we, should we start with that?
Sure.
Okay.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. So, yeah, so I'm here to answer any questions that members of the board may have about the pilots of tonight's consideration. There are going to be additional pilots coming into the city of Poughkeepsie. The next one will be regarding Tompkins Terrace.
It'll be quite. In Beacon.
In Beacon, in the city Beacon. I'm sorry, did I say?
Poughkeepsie.
Poughkeepsie, I'm sorry. There's one in Poughkeepsie, too. But Tompkins Terrace, which is an existing affordable housing project. It currently has a pilot, but it is, that pilot is through the Housing Finance Authority. This is a different structured pilot. Their bond on that project is due for refunding or refinancing in a couple of years. And instead of going to the Housing Finance Authority again, they are looking to perhaps explore coming to the IDA. It's going to be slightly different. Again, this is affordable housing. The, it is a deviated pilot. They're going to be asking probably a much longer pilot. Housing project pilots tend to be anywhere between 30 to 40 years. So it'll be a much longer pilot. The advantage for the community, for them to come to the IDA for a pilot versus the Housing Finance Authority, it's the Housing Finance Authority, has pilots that are given as a right. So there is no input. It's just kind of like, it is what it is. Whereas if it comes to the IDA, there is some negotiation on the pilot. I will say that the pilot that right now that they, I'm in discussions with, will probably be more favorable in terms of revenue for both the school district and the city Beacon than what is currently being received from that property. But in terms of, I know I've watched past meetings. There's been concerns about the effects of pilots on the tax levy. Because this project is already exempt property, it will not have an effect, impact on that. It'll just be, you know, as our policy with this Mirabeau project, we do ask for the taxing jurisdictions consent that, on deviated pilots. So they'll probably be coming and making a presentation. I would say it'll be quite, it's still quite a while because there's still a process when it comes to the housing finance projects.
And, and they're refinancing, but is also, will this be about making improvements to the property?
Yes. So they're refinancing. They are looking at putting in, I don't have the exact numbers, but it is about $26 million in improvements. They're going to be doing a new clubhouse. They're going to put a computer room in. They're going to fix, update all the apartments and modernize them. They're going to repave the roads. They're going to put a new playground, so, things like that, so.
But all the existing tenants would be able to stay there?
All the existing tenants will stay. And, and the pilot, and their payments will stay, the rent will stay the same as well. Because there's certain, so even though they're coming to the IDA, because federal government have rules of what affordable housing is, so there's certain conditions that they'll still have to meet to, to qualify. Actually, in some ways, affordable housing projects are somewhat, they have more rules that they have to do because they have to, they have to abide by more, different authorities and their regulations.
Right.
So.
Thank you. Does anyone have any other questions for Sarah while she's at the podium?
Tell us a little bit about your experiences with the pilots, the deviated pilots, and how it's impacted previous districts that they've agreed upon.
Oh, so, so this all kind of became an issue when the state, uh, began the tax cap law. Prior to that, there really wasn't, I didn't have very, school districts kind of have that kind of discussion that we're having, that you guys are having tonight. The, the tax, the tax cap, the way IDA projects, when IDA projects, I, I don't want to be repetitive of what was discussed earlier, but, um, when a project becomes an IDA project, they become exempt. And so their inclusion in the calculation of what your tax levy is changes slightly. So that denominator can change a little bit. The, you do, the tax, you will be getting revenue, but it'll be profiled differently. It'll be almost like, like a state or federal fund. So you'll, you'll be, you'll see increased revenue, but this, that's, that levy number changes. It may or may not have an impact on your taxpayers. I have a school district in Duchess County. They did the calculation over the life of one of their pilots. Total, in total, they figured that they would probably lose $10,000 going with the pilot, but it was worth it for them because in the end, when the project becomes, uh, and that's not, that's.
When you say lose, you're saying you lose from the tax base.
From, from the levy would go down by $10,000.
Yeah, the levy would go down by $10,000 for the life of the pilot. Versus the revenue will come up.
Right.
But the tax, yeah, so.
And can I ask just a clarifying question about the language you're using? So you, you said you're looking for consent from the school board, but I think what, what I, in my mind, it was a letter of support, which I sort of see as being a little bit different.
So, so it is, what we are actually looking for is, technically, what we're looking for is a letter of consent, that you acknowledge that this project is coming to the IDA for a deviated pilot, and that you consent to that deviation, or that you, you support that, that project. So it can, some, the, some school districts consider a letter of support, and some school districts or taxing jurisdictions consider a letter of consent. The IDA, we call it a letter of consent.
How much weight is that letter given?
So I would say my board probably puts quite a bit of weight on that. The board does have the authority to approve a project without the taxing jurisdictions' consent. But in my experience, we do, we, we do like, the board does like to see consent from all the taxing jurisdictions that are going to be impacted. What it will mean if this, for the project, if it, if, let's say, Mirabeau doesn't get the letter of consent or support from the school district, it'll probably, we will probably ask Mirabeau to come back and work with the school district more until they feel comfortable providing that.
I have more of a process question. Because I've, I've talked to some folks who, just to educate myself about this, who have been involved in economic development. And what I've understood from them is that there's typically kind of input from the beginning, from the municipality and from the community, about the idea of some, of a project being a pilot. And I don't know if that's, you know, is that something that happens? Is this that input, or is that like, what does that look like? Because it, it seemed like it would, it had already been quite an advanced discussion with the city council. But we kind of found out about it in a somewhat less, I don't know, like, the way that we sort of learned about it was just kind of like, hey, a heads up, and like, this is coming to you. And our role is that we're fiduciary trustees. I think you've, Mr. Calog has had to endure a couple of these meetings now where we are having really specific conversations about funding and opportunities. And we're a diverse district, and economically diverse district. So we always have to think about meeting our students' needs. And that really is, that's not, we don't have our hat on as like a community member or nice-to-have or spa-loving individual, of which I would count myself, like, but it's like, this role is very well-defined.
Yes.
And so, um, you know, one of our comments earlier, a commenter in favor of this was talking about, you know, job training and all of these opportunities. But none of that is hammered out. That's not what we're, none of those details have been reached. That's not what we're talking about. When we had this conversation, it was largely about what Mirabeau would be able to do for their business with this status. We are happy for them, but that is not the way we have to think about things. So I'm imagining that your role is to sort of mitigate those two places.
Yes.
Okay, so how have, how have you, like, what have you learned about, like, in terms of Beacon and our needs, and why this would not be necessarily harmful or irresponsible for us to support?
So, um, so this is, yeah, so kind of going back, this is the opportunity to discuss that they, so Mirabeau has not submitted an official application to us. What we do is, when there is a deviated pilot to be proposed, we do ask them to have conversations with the taxing jurisdictions before a proposal is sent to us, so that there has a comfort level of what is going on and if the community has expressed support and consent, you know, for the thought of a, a pilot. I think when it came to this board, the pilot has been kind of ironed out a little bit. That negotiation, that's, we often tell projects, when they want a deviated pilot, to, we don't, to come up with that formula that will work for them, and then to come to the taxing jurisdictions, to the school, you know, in this case, the school board, to kind of then, uh, express their case of why they need this pilot in order for the project to happen. Talking with the city, you know, a lot of my conversations have been with the city management because they're, again, they're, they're, the city is, you know, they're more in charge of the planning and the zoning, right? So this fits in all their zoning, you know, codes. They've, they support, they've expressed support for the project because the project has gotten all the planning supports. It's in line with the city's plans for projects. And so the IDA considers, considers it because the city has gone and it aligns with their strategic plan, it aligns with their zoning, that it is a project that is suitable for the city of Poughkeepsie. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I have, I have a presentation to Poughkeepsie.
Yeah, it's okay.
In the next couple of days. But Beacon, the city of Beacon. So it aligns with the strategic plan of the city Beacon. The IDA also considers job creation as, you know, part of a project. They are, you know, considering to build, create 100 permanent jobs with this project. It is a hospitality and tourism project, which is a key industry for Duchess County. So those factors make it a suitable project.
And just as a question, is it something that, like, Mirabeau comes to you with this idea? Because we have a, I looked, I love, I watched your city council presentation, and I saw the descriptors that were used, like, unique property. This is not hotel, that wouldn't be, wouldn't qualify. It has to be a specific destination. But, you know, we have a property within Beacon that ticked a lot of those boxes in the Roundhouse. And they did not receive pilot status. Is it because they didn't seek it? Or is it because they weren't considered for it? Like, I just am trying to understand how one, how a project becomes something worthy of this.
I think in this case, Mirabeau approached the city first. And then they did their finances, and they realized that they couldn't execute their project without the assistance of the IDA. The Roundhouse was developed before my time, so I don't know what conversations. You know, the economy was different back then, so they may have.
Right after the financial crisis.
Yeah. So they, and every project is different. There's a lot of projects in Duchess County that one project gets ID benefits, and then a similar project doesn't ask for ID benefits. All, it's the investors that are involved. It is the financing that they seek. It's all different factors that why one project will.
And does it have to do with the scope of what they're trying to achieve? Like, is it something where, if this is about financing to do the entire project and all of the pieces that they want to do at once? Or, you know, like, I noticed with the Roundhouse, they kind of did their main building, and then they did their event space, and then they did the other hotels. So it's been over 10 years that that has progressed. But they've been a tax, they've been full, you know, tax status within Beacon during that time. So is it that this is significantly larger than something like that? Or that there's an ambitious plan to do this all at once and about making that happen? And is that something the IDA considers because of the, you know, sort of unique site it would create? Or is it, I, I guess I just don't understand from our standpoint how that, like, that's a great, that's a great for their business plan. I just want to understand, like.
Yeah, so IDA projects, I mean, so IDA projects can work to do two things, both or just one, which is, one is to help a project actually come to fruition. So based on, you know, and the other one is, it also incentivizes it to do it quicker.
Right.
So because they ta, they technically remain on the tax rolls while it's under construction. And their assessment can increase during that time, right? And so.
We have been told that it doesn't typically get assessed at the same rate. Like, it, it's, that almost like that would be something that would be, that historically does not happen. So even though that's something, it's a can, from a fiscal responsibility standpoint, we would need to know that it likely would. And is that something that we should go to the city and say, like, you know, we, we would like to see that this gets assessed annually, or whatever the schedule would be?
So there is, there is a limit of how, so projects can't, properties can't be singly assessed. It has to be assessed as a whole.
Okay.
So, uh, once it's part of property, the, your city, your municipality does go out and like reassesses, and we've all gotten letters from our assessor saying your property has gone up, but doesn't mean your taxes are going to go up, that kind of thing. So it's at that time that the property can be assessed or not. There are, there are communities where they might do a partial ass. I don't know if City Beacon is one. I don't have a lot of experience with pilots in the city Beacon, um, right now. The only project that has, or there's two projects that.
Creek Drive.
Is Creek Drive. Their pilot hasn't started yet. And then Davy South Terrace also has a pilot, so, but.
The IDA was a pilot as well. Right, wasn't the IDA a pilot?
Yes. So, and that one, but that one ended before I started, so I'm not aware of that. But, but yeah, so there are, uh, there are, each municipality assesses their property. It all depends on what your past pattern has been.
And so the schedule that we were provided, or that, the schedule that was released, that was shared, that's likely going to be the schedule. That's, that typically, those things don't deviate. And, I mean, that, that's actually what our attorney shared.
Yeah, I mean, so, so once it enters the pilot, you don't, I don't typically, it can happen, but I don't typically see properties change in value. But if they're doing phasing, so if, again, Mirabeau hasn't sent a formal application, so I can't talk about the phase. I'm on the edge once. But like, if they, if they phase in the project and they're on the pilot, and let's say they only, they build the, the main house, Craig House is developed first, right? And they haven't built the other parts. That might be assessed at like 10 million.
Right.
And then three years down the line, they build out more, and now their assessment's going to go higher. So that pilot that they have proposed with that, that increased assessment may be something that you're going to see, is that as a pilot, the, the assessment value will go up, but then the pilot percentage goes down, so there.
I, I, like, I hope you realize this is not in any way adversarial. I want you to understand that we all live in this community, and these will be questions that we are asked at the grocery store, or at the Little League fields, or at soccer fields. And we'll have to really be able to explain ourselves.
Yeah, no, no, I don't, I don't, I don't see it as adversarial.
The way that we also have to think about it is, or at least I know I think about it this way, is 15 years is an entire generation of our students that go through.
Yep.
And, you know, part of the reason why we were celebrating having a superintendent is because prior to that, we had 10 in 10 years. So that was an entire generation of students that had suffered a lot.
Yeah.
And, and without that stewardship and consistency, there were a lot of gaps here that we've been working really hard to fill. So that's specific to this community. So that's why we have to sort of interrogate any. I know it's not a loss of taxes because it, if you're basing it, if you're framing it around the idea that it's more than we currently have, that would be one way to say that there's a benefit. But if we think about it in terms of what it could be, if, you know, we followed a track more like the Roundhouse, then we, I, I think we all just start thinking about all the programming and salaries that we could fund and things like that. And that's just how we sort of have to think about things. But, but it's very helpful to have these explanations.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I don't, yeah, this is, this is all informational. I mean, I live in this community, you know, in Duchess County as well, so.
Yeah.
So, yeah, and, and I know it's a very complex and nuanced concept.
Yes.
And, you know, I commend this board for like all the information that has been fed to you guys in the past and the discussions that have happened because it is very nuanced. But I, I also agree, I can, I tell people too, economic development is a generational. I'm, the economic development that I'm doing today is not for me. It's for my children and my children's children because those projects don't, won't come into really full till like 10 to 20 years later down the line. So. So, um, you know, these are decisions that are going to affect the future. But again, it's, it's, uh, it is very nuanced, so.
So are there any other, other questions?
Oh, yeah, I just.
Go ahead.
Because you said you spoke with city management and things like that. So how do you think this is going to positively impact the people that actually live here?
So you're going to see greater, I would say, um, commercial activity, those people who come to Mirabeau. Um, they're going to eat at your restaurants, they're going to shop at your shops. Um, they're, uh, they're going to contribute to the sales tax of Duchess County as well as bed tax from the resort. So, um, so there's, uh, direct economic development, uh, um, from there. I would say for the school district, because it is a project that doesn't, um, necessarily, uh, will create additional direct students from it. You know, it is a revenue source where it doesn't, uh, put pressure on the school resources per se.
Okay.
So, um, but yeah.
So, you know, when one of the speakers, uh, mentioned things earlier, talking about field trips or access to the property or all these benefits, it's, those are, again, things that are not hammered out in the IDA. And once we, um, once we, you know, if we decided to, uh, consent, then i- it's not something that, uh, it, there's no mechanism through the IDA that we kind of can negotiate some sort of corporate citizenship effort?
So that would be outside the IDA? So it is, I, um, sorry Ed, but there are, are, I do have ID projects that will negotiate something called a community fund. And that is a fund outside of the IDA, the IDA does not manage that. That is something that, uh, every, I mean, every school, municipality has the right to do that with any project that comes in, whether it's an IDA project or not. But to develop a community fund for specific purposes, they can do that. Um, they are also, again, additional revenue that you can, you know, that you're getting from this pilot payment that you may, you know, depends on how you want to spend that additional revenue as well.
This, um, this project was sort of my introduction to pilots, it's been a real crash course. Um, but I wanted to get a sense from you, um, what do the, um, that's.
Harry Styles, really?
Oh, come on.
Come on, that's for after the meeting.
So what kind of, uh, what kind of projects are most typically applied for these? Or get, or get these kinds of, um, deviated pilots? I mean, is there a certain type of project that generally applies for this? I'm trying to get a sense of how unusual or standard this project is.
Um.
For a pilot.
So I will say, um, the, it is not an unusual project. It is a, um, uh, while, uh, um, I, like maybe twenty years ago, a lot of ID projects were strictly industrial and manufacturing. I mean, that's, the law was written kind of to hit, to, for manufacturers and industrial. As times have changed, what we're seeing as a state and as a country, more ID, more of these IDA projects, uh, be for affordable housing, be for, um, uh, what I call mixed use. So you're seeing like commercial, let's say on the first floor of something and residential above. Uh, if you're familiar, in the town of Poughkeepsie, Eastdale, that's an IDA project, that's a mixed use project. You probably wouldn't have seen that project twenty years ago, but you're seeing more of that across the country, um, having pilots. Uh, the state, uh, allows for tourism projects. It is a, you know, this fits under that tourism destination, so the state, uh, had contemplated projects like these to come to the IDAs for assistance. Um, uh, um, to, you know, to promote tourism, so.
Well, and under the idea of like a tourism, can, are there any others that you can think of that are like this, sort of like a luxury resort type of situation?
There is a pro, there are a couple of projects being considered. I can't talk about them because I'm under an NDA and they're very early in process, but there are other projects that have come to me that are, uh, very similar to the Mirabeau project. They're, uh, perhaps considering, um, you know, uh, their options for IDAs. The, the, what me, what many times what an IDA does in terms of the tax exemption is that we all know that living in New York State is more expensive than other states. It often le, levels the playing field. It doesn't necessarily offer them an advantage, but because where we're situated, Pennsylvania, Connecticut, um, are low tax states compared to us. So by offering this pilot, not only may it reduce their, uh, their ability, you know, to get financing, but it also levels, it makes Duchess County attractive to them versus, you know, doing this exact same project in Connecticut or Pennsylvania, or even New Jersey.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Um, are there other, do you have any other questions?
I have other questions.
Go ahead.
Discussion.
Okay, I just wanted to bring, um, one point up in terms of the letter that we prepared. Um, one of my biggest concerns is the, the fact that this does not get included in the tax base growth factor. Um, and I know that this is something that's sort of up in the air and is, it's possible that it will be approved. But it's a big concern for me. I mean, we, we have gained over a million dollars to our levy in the past few years, um, because of all the development in Beacon. And that's really the only way we do benefit from the development in Beacon because of the tax cap. So that, that's, you know, that's no fault of Mirabeau or the DC IDA, but that is, that is a fact for us and I think we really do need to consider it in terms of what is the financial impact here. That's not ten thousand dollars, that's, you know, that's quite a bit more considering the value of this property. So I felt it was really necessary to include that in the letter. Um, and I think it's something that NISBA is aware of and I think it's something that we can write a resolution for and try to get more lobbying around. But we don't have any guarantees on it.
We need to do advocacy around that.
But I think the offset that piece is that you get the special funding, right? So it's not going to be a tax base growth, right, for that property. Right now it's fifty-four thousand dollars for that property there that's on the tax base.
Yeah.
Right? But through the pilot, we would get special funds like a federal grant or something through us, right? That they would be paying us through the pilot as it was outlined in that schedule. And then after fifteen years, if I'm understanding it correctly, after fifteen years, then it would go on the tax base.
So like. The last meeting Dan said that that's not guaranteed.
Yeah.
Yeah, Dan.
It gets folded in, it doesn't get, the way, the way the current law is written, it gets unfortunately folded in. It wasn't the case.
What does that mean folded in?
Well, the, the, yeah.
Come on, Dan, don't be so shy, Dan.
I'm beating myself again, I apologize.
Do we need to play Harry Styles for you to get in here?
That was a good one, I, I enjoyed that. Uh, uh, so anyway, the, as the rules, uh, are currently, uh, on the books, uh, commercially developed tax exempt property, which is what, uh, if the, if the IDA grants financial assistance, uh, to, to, to Mirabeau, that's what it would be, commercially developing property that will be off the tax, off, that will not be on the tax rolls. Um, that is not factored into the tax levy growth factor. Because it's, there's no quantity factor for it because it's not taxable assessed valuation, like for example, Roundhouse. And so it's not, so not only does it not get accounted for in the tax levy factor at any point during the pilot agreement, when the property goes back on the tax roll, it also doesn't get, it, even though there's twenty-five, because there's no new development at that point, as I understand it. So that's sort of like a, a gap in the law. Uh, but there is authority, at least for the, uh, for the commissioner of taxation and finance to develop regulations to clarify that. So far, the commissioner of taxation and finance has not done that. And that perhaps is an area where, uh, US Board can advocate through NISBA. And, and I'm sure at, that Sarah has, has had this experience with other school districts. This is an, uh, this is an issue. So perhaps there is some alliance and some, uh, between the IDA and the school boards to advocate, to, to help school districts to remediate this gap in the laws.
Right, because that, that would be my question is, they have, they have the authority, but they don't necessarily have the incentive to clarify that rule.
Well, in fact, it did, it did pass in the, before, when Cuomo was governor, it did pass in the house, uh, in both houses, but Cuomo vetoed it. And so I, I think, I, I feel, you know, cautiously optimistic that if it got that far again, it would not be vetoed this time, but it's, it's really an unknown.
Do you have, um, contacts of other IDAs where there have been similar projects that have school districts? That, because we've, we, we don't have like a great record of getting our resolutions passed by NISBA, but it, through advocacy.
I think we're zero for.
We're zero. But, so, we don't have a lot of, we don't have a lot of juice in that sort of category, but if this is something that we could link up with other school districts around developing some clarification.
Yes, I, I would say you would have a lot of support. I mean, I'm, so I'm, uh, also the incoming president of the New York State Economic Development Council.
Congratulations.
Thank you, which is heavily advocating for this because we think it's a technical issue. Um, we feel that at the time Cuomo vetoed it because the tax cap law was not law yet. And this was something that he had run his campaign on and now it's law. And so we feel confident because it passed both in this, uh, in the senate and the assembly. And we're working with all our partners that worked with us in the past to get this, um, approved. So we're working very diligently. I've had, the past two weeks, I've met with various assembly members as well as senators on this and getting this back on the, uh, ballot to be considered, um.
So again, just to like nail it down though, because of, as far as like the responsibilities of us making this decision, I think we would like to ask for help in linking up, like very specifically, in linking up with these other districts so that we can advocate for this change. Because it is something that if you're saying that we're not competitive with other states that have lower tax rates and we want commercial to occur here, then this would be fiscally responsible to be able to advocate for something like this. But we need help doing that. We're all volunteers and we like, you know, this is something that would be, like from a nuts and bolts perspective, helpful to have assistance with.
Yeah. But even so, I have a question, if that did happen, say that happens, and, and that's also assuming that they accept all current pilots and not just incoming pilots because it's possible we could be sort of like grandfathered out of that even if it did happen. If it, if, if we didn't have that, with the, with the pilot, if that happens, that would happen in fifteen years, right?
Yes.
We would, we would, we would receive that tax base growth factor income to the levy in fifteen years. If you don't have the pilot, as soon as the assessment goes up on the property, we, it would be included in the tax base growth factor. So that's in like, you know, optimistically, two years, right? So then there is the sort of like build of two percent of that growing every year. I mean, I, I just think that there's, there are a lot of things to think about here, um, that really, that really add up.
Yeah, I mean, and it's, it's a complex issue. I mean, it's very nuanced because what, if the pilot is, uh, not approved, you know, it's, it's that opportunity cost is what would happen, you know, to that project? Would it ha, would, would it happen? Would, you know, would something else happen there?
Well, supposedly it would not happen, right? Because that's, that's, uh, the, these are for projects that would not happen.
Without the assistance of the IDA.
So, and I'm, and I get that and I hear that and it's, you know, for me, it's sort of like a, what you know is maybe better than what you don't know. You know, I, I think that, I recognize that, um, it's, you know, it's something that will eventually come onto the tax rolls. I recognize that it's not adding schoolchildren to the district, so there's no extra cost to the district. I'm very grateful that there will be some public access through the Greenway Trail. Those are all benefits as far as I'm concerned. So it's really balancing the fiscal impact, which I think that there is fiscal impact.
Yes.
With those things.
I mean, I need to look back at who potentially, a religious group potentially bought that, oh, almost bought that property where they would have been off and we wouldn't have gotten any taxes.
Absolutely.
Right, and we definitely.
So we have a project that could do something and we are going to get more funds from that pilot than we currently are now.
Yep.
Right? So it's, are you willing to take the risk and say, hey, no? And risk that the project doesn't happen?
Yeah.
Right? And then who does come in and purchase it? Or do we work, get an increase of, I think it was like three point two million dollars, um, over to fifteen years?
Over fifteen years.
Yeah, over fifteen, over fifteen years.
And our budget is?
I wasn't done, Kristen.
Sorry.
Over to fifteen years and then, you know, that's a conservative where we're getting fifty-four thousand dollars now. And I know it will go up because that was with a previous assessment and it was purchased for ten million dollars. But do you take a risk or do you go conservative?
Mm-hmm, yeah, and I, I think the risk is real. I think that there, you know, there are organizations, um, that would be able to take it off the tax rolls that have enough money to buy it if it were to go for sale. I mean, that, that's really sort of where I landed. I have, there's, I will be honest, I have a lot of discomfort about, um, some of the elements of it, but in the end, I feel like it's, it's sort of, you know, better than the alternative.
Mr. Kellogg, I have a question for you.
I was feeling lonely.
Yeah. I think through these discussions, like, do you, I, do you understand the, the struggle that we're experiencing? Like what, what's hard?
I totally understand it.
And, and what uniquely to Beacon, like the populations we serve and who we're thinking of when we were, you know, when we were thinking about making sure that we get every opportunity we can, especially for our Title I students? So, I mean, I think that it would be helpful to know if a community fund would be amenable to the Mirabeau organization. And I recognize that that's putting you on the spot and you can't necessarily commit to it now. But we have a school foundation that's just started, that's kind of put a lot of wind in the sails of special programming that we've done. And any, um, any thinking about how to be, uh, join the, you know, this community in this way, especially if we are, um, thinking about supporting, you know, the, making the potential of your project realization would be, would be helpful.
Well, Mr. Tang asked this the last time, would we make another payment? Uh, you, you know, we, we feel we're paying a significant amount in taxes. I think it was, like I said before, it was fifty thousand a year to the school district in the past ten years. Going forward, it's going to average a hundred and seventy-five thousand, um, in addition to employment for students and employment for residents. Uh, so we haven't thought about a community fund. I mean, I'm not certain exactly, you know, what that is, but, uh, we just think, you know, the additional tax revenue to the school district and to the city, the employment opportunities, uh, the sales tax. Uh, and this is also, you mentioned the roundhouse. Uh, the roundhouse is on four or five acres. I mean, I don't know the history of the roundhouse. Uh, you know, we're on sixty-five acres and what we're talking about here is just the inn and spa project. So in addition to that, and we sat on about ten acres, uh, this portion of the project, you know, but there's going to be a lot of additional portions of the project. So there's also a great deal of upside here as well, where the roundhouse is really more fixed. But, um, um, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of.
But it has factored into our tax base growth factor.
Yeah, I, I don't know the history of the roundhouse.
It has.
It does.
And it also came into Beacon at a time where it was very risky.
Yeah.
I think the risk for success has gone.
Yeah, it was pre-explosion.
Yeah, very much so, yeah.
If the board was, the board as a whole was in agreement, I'm just going to throw something out there, that's why I'm prefacing it that way. Would you sit down with our attorney and we could like, you know, to get some assurances that if we do write this letter of support, there, there would be some, some benefit to the school, whether it be through a community organization piece or, uh, employment for, you know, students that would be going that way? Like, would you be willing to sit down and have that? Because once we write the letter of assurance or, um, then, then it's like there's nothing there, right? So before we do that, would you be willing to sit down? We could meet with our attorney and say, hey, listen, this is what's assurances we would want? And then we could come up with a written agreement? And, and would you be willing to sit down and talk to our attorney prior to us doing that?
Um, I'd have to talk to my partners first.
Sure.
You know, this is like totally outside of what we normally do. It's just the additional tax revenue and employment and future upside is what, you know, we think is the major benefit. You know, not very many developers, you know, we support, you know, the school in Reinbeck, all of our communities. We support the school, all of the not-for-profits in the community, you know, we donate to the community foundation.
Right, but you're paying taxes that also.
We're paying taxes everywhere.
Right, but we're saying that for us.
We're paying taxes here. We're paying a significant amount of taxes here. I don't understand the legislation.
I just want to, I mean, I just want to clarify, you know, a tax abatement is specifically a tax abatement. So you are, you're paying, payment in lieu of. So you are, you're paying, payment in lieu of taxes, which is.
Way more than is being generated for the last ten years.
That, that's so true, that's so true. But I think it's important to say way less than you would be paying if you were on the tax rolls.
I think that I, I would reckon, I would, I would strongly recommend, wait, I would strongly recommend a pause because we are really trying to work with you. Like, we, and, and the IDA person is nodding a lot of what we're saying. We're trying to make this happen.
Yeah, I think.
And I feel like we're not in a real estate negotiation.
So Kristen, I, I think that.
We're not com, we're not comfortable with a community fund.
Ed, I'm going to stop you for a second, please. I would love for you to go back and talk to your partners. I would like to have some time with our lawyer as well. I think I, I'm comfortable with pausing this and not going to a vote tonight.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think we should do that.
All right, that's fine.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for coming. Thank you very much, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah, yeah.
Thank you, Dan, for coming. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Are there any items that any board members would like to, uh, pull from the agenda? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve, well, uh, wait, where does it start? Eleven point oh one through fifteen point oh three.
So move.
Four seconds?
Yeah.
I'm going to give it to Eunice. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm also in favor, passes eight to zero. Do we need an executive session?
I would like to make a, uh, go to executive session to discuss, uh, get information from our attorney.
I'm going to second your motion.
I second.
Oh, you can second. Comments or questions?
Is it an exec session, are we coming back?
We, no, the board will take no action, uh, at the, after this.
So I can have some staff go home?
Absolutely, yes.
So get your music on, Saggy. I love Harry Styles, too.
Wait, we didn't vote.
Every time I talk.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm in favor, passes eight to zero.
Do you need Ann Marie for like financial stuff?